My son was five months old and then I had my jury convinced, so we were just stuck in the house with a 15-month-old little baby.
Isn't that what you're supposed to call it?
Yeah, well, we did.
It's called the Coven's Bomb, right?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. 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 Very, very lucky. Very. I mean, with the news, definitely.
All right, are we about ready? I'm gonna give the 30-second warning here. Okay, Amy, I think anytime you want to do this.
Well, I, um, I usually, I think I know most of the faces in this room, not all of the faces in this room. I'm the superintendent and I'm the director of the school district. And I just wanna send my gratitude to everyone who is here tonight, but especially for our three candidates who have volunteered to run for our school board. An extremely important position that really makes a huge difference to our community. For everyone we all know is an amazing, wonderful community, something that I've gotten to know more and more over the last seven months I've been here. And I just bless every day to be able to be here in this district, who've been waiting in the margins of our school board, several school board members in the audience, former students, former board members. But tonight, I want to thank Katie Ryan and Clayton for taking the time to share their ideas and to be here tonight to do something to grow and to get everything to go up. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for facilitating our event tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good evening, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Metro St. Louis, our hosts, Brentwood School District, and particularly Kate Hastings, who really made this happen, we're thankful for that. My name is Kathleen Farrell, and I'm gonna be your moderator tonight. And I want to thank the candidates for participating. These are tough times. I think we have a bubble of rationality right here in the Brentwood District. But I, I, these are tough times for schools, and it looks like we have three good people who've offered up to be of service to their district, so I thank you for that. You can vote for two candidates in the election to serve on your board, and they are in order as they appear on the ballot, Ms. Katie Clark, Mr. Ryan Flynn, and Mr. Clayton Zach. Now, that's the order on the ballot, and that is the order in which we're gonna give opening statements. The League believes that one of the best ways for voters to learn about people who are seeking to represent them is to hear candidates speak and answer questions not that are rehearsed or given to them ahead of time, but are spontaneous from the audience in an engaged public forum. Many say that civil discussion of community issues, and that's particularly true these days of schools, as I said, this looks like a bubble of rationality here that you have here, so nurture it very carefully, is impossible. But that, as I understand it, is not true here, but there are challenges facing this district, and it's important to have engaged public input into how those challenges get met. So, the following rules are gonna help us get that done tonight. Candidates each are gonna have two minutes in an opening statement, then they're gonna have one minute to answer each question. And if we got a question that was directed to a particular person, and we did get one, we're going, I'm going to modify that question so that everybody can answer the same question. Everybody answers every question. And what we do is we just keep rotating around so that the same person doesn't go first every single time. And then you're gonna have two minutes for a closing statement. Now, here's what the audience is supposed to do, and I've already, in the retired schoolteacher mode, tried to motivate you to write questions, but you can write questions of general interest or directed to one candidate. And please write one question per card, and just raise your hand, and one of the League volunteers will come get it from you. Marcia Clark's a timekeeper. She takes no prisoners. So, she's gonna time everything, and she's got 30 minutes, and then she's gotta stop, and she's serious, and you know what? I'm a retired professor, I can cut you off in a blink. So, just fair warning. So, the moderator is gonna enforce the rules. We know that this is being livestreamed on YouTube on the district's channel, so you can tell your friends that if you want to text them or whatever you do, and it will also be up there for everyone to look at. You can make audio recordings, you can take pictures, video recordings. We believe that this is an open, free, public forum. So, let's begin. And we're going to begin with you, Ms. Clark, if you'd like to give your opening statement.
I just want to introduce myself. My name's Katie Clark. I'm a mom, wife, and daughter. I grew up here in the St. Louis area, went to college here in Missouri, so I'm very familiar with everything around here. And I've lived in Brentwood for over 13 years, and my husband and I have two children. They're both in BECC, although my son will start kindergarten in the fall at McGrath. My, I attended, oh, another important point is that I am from a multi-generational family, so my mom lives with us, so I feel like I get a lot of perspective from, from her as well. I attended public schools for my entire education, from preschool all the way through to Truman State University where I graduated, and I'm really a strong believer in the mission of public schools. And because Brentwood is such a wonderful place, and because it's such a wonderful district, I wanted to be involved, and I also wanted to serve my community. And I'm currently a volunteer on the Committee for Finance and Facilities here in the district, and I look forward to hearing your questions.
Okay, Mr. Flynn.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and everyone else for spending your time with us tonight to get to know the candidates. For those that don't know me, my name is Ryan Flynn, and I've been honored to be serving on the board as vice president for the last three years. I am running for reelection because I truly believe in the power of education to transform students' lives. As a parent, I've seen firsthand how this has happened with my, my two boys. I have, they've gone from early childhood center through Brentwood Middle School to Brentwood High School. My wife and I have been residents for the past 18 years in Brentwood, and we absolutely love this community, and we want to see that continue to flourish. Since joining the board, I've worked to strengthen our district by working on a number of different committees, Communications Committee, Finance and Facilities, and our Strategic Plan Committee. These alls have given me a lot of valuable information on some of the strengths and also some of the challenges that our district does face, but I'm very focused on continuing to move forward for us to achieve some of our goals. During my time on the board, we've accomplished a tremendous amount. We've done two construction, two-and-a-half construction projects right now with McGrath Early Childhood Center and Mark Twain, with our final project gonna be completed in the spring. We've established our 20, no, thank you, our five-year strategic plan as well. It has just been a fantastic opportunity the last couple of years, and it's been an honor to serve. So, if reelected, I want to continue building on our strengths, continue to build on our strategic plan, execute on those objectives and goals, and fulfill our mission for our students.
And finally, last but not least, Mr. Zach.
I'm used to going last. For those that don't know me, my name's Clayton Zach. I've been a Brentwood resident for almost eight years. I have a daughter in kindergarten named Mark Twain. My wife Rachel is involved in the PTA, and that kind of spurred me to want to get involved and help out the school district as well. I think it's a great place. It's why my wife and I chose to live here. The school district is amazing, and I think that I have some skills that would be useful to the board. Currently, an attorney, working in-house at a Fortune 1,000 company. I do a lot of contract work, general advice for the executive team and the board of directors there, and, you know, I just, I'm looking forward to hopefully giving back to my community through being a board member and serving and, you know, bringing my skills to bear.
Okay, we're gonna begin the questions with you, Mr. Flynn. First question is, what do you think the biggest priority that the district needs to focus on right now, and why?
Great question. So, I think the most important thing that the district needs to focus on is retention of our students. We have a fantastic student body through the elementary schools. Unfortunately, when we get to the middle and high school, that's where some things, we start to see a little bit of students going to other school districts, and I would really like us to continue to remain focused on retention of our great student population.
Okay. Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I mean, I think that overall, the district is wonderful, and, you know, my approach would be to help to improve things at the margin. It sounds like we have some challenges. You know, I would view my role as kind of advising and insisting the board members who are rolling over or continuing their term, they know the problems better than I do, and of course, listening to the community, they also know the problems better than I do. So, you know, to me, what's the biggest priority? It's listening to those who have the knowledge of the problems the district faces and trying to assist where I can and give guidance where I can.
Okay, Ms. Clark.
I would say selling our district, both within the district and outside of the district. So, I had someone, when we said we were committed to staying in Brentwood, someone from outside the district asked me, well, where are you gonna send your kids to school? I said Brentwood, and they said, oh, I don't, I don't know about that. I thought maybe you'd send to private. And I said, Brentwood is one of the best districts in the St. Louis County area, so no, I'm not going to send them anywhere else. So, I think we need to get that message across both internally to the people that live in the district so that we can retain people from middle and high school, but also externally so that we have a reputation that people wouldn't, wouldn't question that either.
Okay, we're gonna start with you. You get to go first, Mr. Zach. What do you think about that?
It's a rare occasion. I'll treasure it.
I have four questions about what you just brought up, which will allow you to elaborate. How do you increase enrollment and decrease attrition? Do you have at least one specific suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, I think that working with the city to increase the population is a big thing that would be helpful, the increasing enrollment. I know, I think Brentwood's great, and a lot of people want to live here, but we're limited to some extent by geography, and it would be nice to see more people moving in and the city growing. I also like my other two candidates' suggestions of community outreach within the community and outside. I think that's always important, and Brentwood sold me. That's why I'm here, so I know that it can be done.
Okay. Ms. Clark, a specific suggestion to get people to come to this excellent public school?
So, my suggestion is, coming from the outside, not going to, I didn't graduate from Brentwood. I was used to a much bigger district, so I think the entire size of the Brentwood School District is like two classes of my high school, and my husband went to an even larger district. So, we did, at one point, have a conversation, like, would our kids benefit from going to a larger district? And the answer we came up with is no, because we think there's so many benefits here from being able to try things, the individual attention, the small class sizes. I had one staff person tell me, your kid will never get lost here, and I, I really appreciate that. But I think we have to communicate that, especially to people who are from outside St. Louis or outside of this district, that you can get a big school experience in a small package.
Finally, you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, so, I think when it comes to recruiting and retention, I think it really boils down to marketing. We do just, we have such fantastic academics, but we don't do a very great job at communicating that out to the broader audience. So, that would be one thing I would say, that we continue to do our community outreach, educate people on the benefits of coming to Brentwood. There's not many school districts where you can graduate with 43 semester credit hours into college that I know of. In addition to that, I think as a district as a whole, something very specific and internally that we could do is start leveraging what we have. We're a very small community, a very small district, so kind of cross-pollinate, if you will, from, you know, the high school down to the middle school, middle school down to the elementary schools. Have those kids integrate a little bit more, find opportunities to have a high school student go into elementary and welcome people into, into the school and vice versa.
Okay, thank you. We started to get into this, but to drill down into it just one more time, because somebody asked a very specific question about this. They are looking at the gap between people being in the middle schools and then losing students before they go into the high schools. Do you have a specific suggestion about how to market your high schools better? Yes?
That's a very good question. So, I think it starts within the district. So, I think it starts with, I know I've heard stories of people being asked when their kid starts kindergarten, well, then where are you gonna send them in high school? And I think if we can start by educating kids K through 5 and then K through 8 on what opportunities are available, and the families understand how much college credit is available, that there's a new 6 through 12 director coming in that's going to be looking at activities across the middle school and high school, and feeding that information for a long time, so there's that long buildup all the way from kindergarten on of, these are all of the great opportunities. I think that's a good place to start.
Mr. Flynn.
So, I would agree. I think we need to do a better job of communicating that to the parents. At the end of the day, the parents are the ones cutting the check for a student to go to a private school, as your student could say how much they don't like the school or how much they love the school, but ultimately, we have to influence the parents. So, that means we need to get out in front of the parents and educate them, repeated over and over and over, all the great, great things that Brentwood School District offers, so we can quiet down some of that noise and build pride back in the district. I'd love to see a sea of purple at every, everywhere we go. You know, why I originally really wanted to be on the board several years ago was I saw that kids were wearing private school attire and promoting that. So, we gotta flip the script, and I think we start there.
Okay. How about you, Mr. Zach?
I think those are all great suggestions. To me, you know, I think one of the drawbacks of a high school is that it is so small, and so for something like athletics, you know, truthfully, we're never gonna be in competition with bigger school districts. So, we should lean into the strengths of Brentwood School District, which is the academics and the amazing opportunities that are available for students of all ages. And I think if we leaned into that, focus on the college credit opportunity that's been mentioned, that we can get people who are really focused on preparing their kids for college and beyond, and really, you know, focus on the academics portion of it through community outreach.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna start with you this time, Mr. Flynn. We're gonna talk about technology a while. So, first question is, what is your position on smartphones and other electronic devices in schools?
This is a great question. It's my favorite question. It's my favorite topic of conversation at home. I do not believe that having a smartphone device in the classroom provides any benefit towards a student whatsoever. I think as students come into the classroom, they can put them into a little cubby and leave them alone, because that interrupts academics. It interrupts their focus. It interrupts their energy. So, keeping those to the side, and when they leave the classroom, picking up the phone and doing what they need to do.
Mr. Zach, you gonna take away those phones?
Yeah, I definitely would take them away. I think, you know, having a kindergarten, my area of focus or concern is more on the younger child's side, and, you know, they have the iPads in class, and to me, I would move to more limit that. You know, technology's gonna be a part of every child's life, but I learned how to use an iPhone. As an adult, I'm sure they can too. I'd rather them be focused on traditional education, workbooks, and listening to the teacher, and working on the basics. The technology can come later.
Okay, Ms. Clark.
So, I mentioned that my mom lives with us, which has its benefits and its drawbacks. She has mentioned that I am addicted to my phone. So, yeah, I'm an adult. I'm 41, and I have a hard time sometimes putting down my phone. I don't have executive function problems, I don't think, and/or my executive function has been developed. So, for kids who are still developing their executive function, that's a big ask to ask them to be able to control themselves around their phone. So, I'm of the opinion, I, as a parent, worry about screen time all the time, and yes, I think other, I understand some parents want phones in the classroom for safety reasons, and I get it, it's very scary out there, but it's hard to see them as anything other than a distraction to learning how to be a human being with the people next to you instead of staring at your screen. So, I think probably cabbies or pockets or something would be the best solution for that.
Okay, we're gonna start with you this time, Mr. Zach, and it just so happens that one of the questions we got online was directed to you. So, and it's about technology, so there's a method to my madness here. This question, and everybody can answer it, is talking about the role of technology in the classroom and how to improve, the writer wrote, technological access for the staff and students. How do you improve that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a graduated scale, right? So, when they're young, less technology, but in older ages and in middle school and beyond, I think the right kind of technology is where the focus needs to be. You know, I see all the amazing robotics activities and 3D printers and all of the amazing technology that's available for kids that already have the fundamentals down. I think focusing on that really does provide a value, because we do live in a very technological age. And same thing, I think that the board so far is on the right path with moving to digital, digital tools and for community, for community outreach and engagement. And so, I think that it's about balancing that, taking away some technology where it's not so helpful, and focusing on areas where it could be very helpful to the students and the community and the staff.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Clark.
Well, since I already mentioned my age, I'll mention that when I was in elementary school, we still had a computer lab, which was a huge deal, and learning typing. I remember I went to typing class, I think in fifth grade, and so it was a big deal to, to get that technology and learn how to use it. My concern as a parent now is that technology is so ubiquitous. I'm not, I, I don't have the concern in this district or with probably most of the children here that they have problems learning to use the technology or using it. My, my concern is on the flip side of, when does technology become too much? When does it distract in the classroom, and when does it take away from social relationships and learning how to be a human in a human in the real world, not, not online?
Okay, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, so when it comes to technology, I think technology needs to be applied at the right time. It's not, doesn't need to be, give everybody all the access to every, every technological, technological device or system. It needs to be at the right point in time. It's overwhelming even for us adults having a smartphone, let alone for kids that have an iPad or have their laptops. It needs to be at the, technology needs to be at the right place at the right, right time, and that includes teachers as well.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna start with you this time, Ms. Clark, and you all have provoked some thinking in the audience, and so this one is about sports, because it got mentioned and somebody wrote a question. They say, sports are also important, not just academics. How do we and are we promoting our sports? What recommendations do you have to help our sports programs in a small school?
So, I, I love watching sports. I've never been accused of being an athlete, but I think we've done some great things partnering with other districts when kids are interested, and that's what I love about Brentwood, is they take, it's a student-driven, hey, you're interested in this, let's, let's try it. So, like pairing up with the Clayton High School for football, for example. I think a good way is to go out and see other districts that may have other smaller programs that we can pair up with as a way of providing more competition to the students that are looking for it. I think that's a good place to start.
Hey, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, so I think sports are really critical when it comes to our students' social and emotional development. You learn a tremendous amount by working on a team. You learn to deal with adversity, tenacity. There's a number of different things that go along with sports that provide a great significant benefit to our students, and it also builds a lot of pride in the school district. So, to get the word out, I think we need to do a much better job at communicating it out to the broader public, letting the rest of the Brentwood community know what sports we do offer, when those games are, are going on, to get more of our community members involved and get them here on campus.
Hey, Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I think I mentioned earlier that it's always gonna be a challenge with the district, our size, and I think that there's been some creative opportunities made available, like partnering with other school districts where we can. You know, you know, we can do what we can, but we're limited. That's why I think really the focus should be on academics. I don't want to take away anybody's sports opportunities. We should work where we can, but we're always gonna be limited by just the size of the district. So, wherever we can do that community outreach and pair with other districts, yeah, let's do it, and, you know, keep looking for creative solutions, but unfortunately, I think we're always gonna have that limitation.
Okay, we're gonna start with you this time, Mr. Flynn. What is your opinion on tuition-paying students coming to Brentwood?
Just overall, just tuition-paying students? Are we talking about school choice?
Well, I think that the person, and I won't call on them, but the person is asking about, what's your philosophy about bringing in other students who would pay to go to this district?
Excuse me, I'm certainly supportive of that. I think we need to have the right frame around that, what the cost is, when are they coming in. There's a lot of nuances there that really need to get flushed down. There's a lot of nuances there that really need to get flushed out before a very rash and very quick decision gets made. So I would encourage that we take the time to do a very in-depth investigation on what is the right thing for those students and what is the expectation going forward once we do have a student that comes in and is paying tuition? What can we do as a district? Can we continue to increase the price of tuition if our cost continues to increase? What does that do when we have to go back to the community and ask for another bond, for example? So there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, but I'm certainly open to it, given the right circumstances.
And just so you know, there are two questions that are almost identical about tuition-paying students, so there is some interest about that. Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I mean, I'd always keep an open mind and want to listen to everybody and do the homework that we need to do to make that decision, but where I stand, I would rather have students within the district to try to grow the population of students within the district because I think that that fosters a better sense of community if you're walking to school with every other student, riding your bike to school with every other student. So I'd like to see more family and children move into the district and grow our district that way rather than bringing in tuition-paying students from outside the district.
Okay, Ms. Clark.
So I think it's an issue that should be considered perhaps in a staged manner. So maybe first looking at people who move up, who were residents of the district who then move out, and we give them an opportunity to continue to pay if they want to keep their kids here. See how many takers there are, see how much interest there is, and then perhaps consider opening it up further for tuition-paying students. But I think doing it in a staged approach would give you an idea of how it would work, but limiting the pool of initial people at first.
Okay, thank you. This is a question that came in on the online question forum in the district, and we're going to start with you this time, Mr. Zach. It says, "The Missouri School Board Association requires new board members to have member training and overall refresher training." It says they also offer different kinds of courses and resources there. If elected, how would you see yourself participating in these kinds of programs?
Oh, that's a great question and one that I would be, you know, I have a lot of experience with that. You know, as an attorney, I have continuing legal education requirements, and not only do I meet them, I exceed them. That's part of what I love about my job is continuing to learn. And I've been made aware of the resources that are available to board members, and I would definitely wholeheartedly use those resources.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Clark.
Yeah, so I would definitely take advantage of all the initial training, and then depending on issues that are coming before the board, would want to take more specific training as well. I consider myself a lifelong learner. If you're not learning, you're dying. And so, yeah, I definitely, anything that could help me, I definitely want to learn.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I think just having a growth mindset that you never know everything and continuing to take advantage of all those opportunities that present itself with challenges that you do see, look for those learning opportunities. That's what we do with our students each and every day. They don't know something, they learn something. So we need to, as parents, be a model.
Okay. So we're going to start with you this time, Ms. Clark. This question is about how you would understand how teachers are performing in the classroom. And the question is, as a board member, how important is it for you to be aware of how teachers are doing in the classroom in terms of connecting with individual students, particularly given our size?
So I should say, my kids are in preschool, but so far I've just been impressed by the teachers that we've had and then just the surrounding staff and the commitment and just interest that they take in the kids every day. I think as a board member, the superintendent is your only employee, right? And so you want the superintendent to be the one where staff concerns come first. But as a servant to the community, you always want to be open to hearing concerns, and I would certainly want to hear from parents if they had concerns or questions about things going on in the classrooms.
Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I kind of echo what Katie mentioned there. It really comes down to the superintendent, but we're also the voice of the community. So bringing situations up regarding maybe a specific teacher or a specific situation, going through those appropriate channels, because even though we are a small school district, we can get inundated with tons of questions and tons of feedback, and that's not necessarily our role as a board. Our role as a board is to manage the superintendent and be fiscally responsible, so.
Okay, finally you, Mr. Zach.
Is everyone getting tired of hearing? I echo the other candidates. You know, I would just maybe put one spin on what's already been said and say that I think that one element of this is teacher retention. I think that that's always something we should be striving to improve. When you have turnover and somebody's coming into the community for the first time to start teaching, they have to learn the community, learn its quirks, its benefits, its problems. You know, I would just like to work with the superintendent to make sure that teacher retention is a big focus. And as the other candidates mentioned, always be listening and always be trying to solve any problems that arise.
Okay, now you're going to correct me. Who goes first this time?
I feel like I haven't gone first in quite a while.
I think you are absolutely right.
Go for it.
So I knew he would pay attention to that. I think this is related to the last question, and so I'm putting them together. It's a very specific question, but I think we could widen it. Question is, have you read The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Hart? Or have you heard about it? What is your reaction to it? And I think we could widen that, because I have read that book, to say, what are your thoughts on this generation, which seems to be, or some people are arguing, is much more anxious about life and the world and their futures than perhaps previous ones are?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So I've listened to Mr. Hayden's speeches that are available. My wife has read the book. It was one of her book club books, so I have discussed it in quite some depth. And I, you know, I do see that there is a problem, and I think the problem has been clearly identified, that it's over-engagement in a bad way through technology and not having breaks. And I think that, as we've all kind of mentioned, I think limiting technology in the classroom is part of fixing that or addressing that issue. And then I think having a strong sense of community and having extracurriculars that keep the kids engaged with each other and not being, you know, online and anonymous or feeling emboldened behind a screen does help. And the community is great about providing those. You know, my daughter does the after-school Monday dance program that's been a cornerstone of the community for quite some time. I think leaning into those types of community opportunities would be very helpful.
Okay, Ms. Clark.
So my husband asked me to buy him The Anxious Generation for Christmas, which I did. I haven't read it yet. So I think there can be a tendency sometimes to make things like phones the root of all evil, and I don't think that either. But I do worry about all social media algorithms that are feeding us things that don't challenge us, reinforce our own beliefs, and kind of get you stuck in a loop of just scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. And if it's difficult for us to escape that loop, as I said before, I think it's really a hard ask to ask children and teenagers to escape that loop. So I think that there is something to what is being said in that book, and I do have a lot of concerns about that.
Mr. Flynn.
So while I haven't read that book specifically, I do understand we are an anxious generation, and just as I'm, you know, on social media, I can see that. And it just is multiplied tenfold when it comes to your kids. And it's why we've limited, we've learned our lesson as parents the hard way. We gave our oldest a cellphone when he was in seventh grade, and that was the worst decision that we made as parents. So now that we have a sixth grader, we, he has a communication device, a phone on his wrist, but it doesn't have the social media and all those things that create that additional anxiety. So that's my sense.
Okay, we're going to start with you this time, Ms. Clark. And this is a question that has come up twice. And it is about how can you provide a safe space for your students here, given the present political climate at the federal and the state level?
So I think it's important for children to always know they have one person at least, at least one person that they know they can go to and be safe and secure to talk to. There is a lot going on right now, and I think it's flipped a little bit, right? It used to be all politics is local, and now all politics is national. I think having someone that you know you can always go to, whether it's a parent, a staff member, a teacher, an administrator, I think providing that is important. I think that's the solution. And in a district like Brentwood where kids don't get lost, where there is such a low ratio of students to staff, I think that is part of the solution and why I think we still have a pretty healthy environment here in Brentwood, it seems like. Again, my kids are only in preschool, so.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, how about you?
Yes, so whether it's now or three or five years ago, I mean, politics are politics, whether it's at the federal or the state level, the impact to the children, yes, they need somebody safe to come and talk to about, but that's really, I think, the role of a parent. When it comes to the school, we're not here to teach them what to think, but how to think on their own and supply that information in an unbiased, objective manner if it impacts them, not provide your individual feedback to what you truly believe.
Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I think that part of the board's mission is to ensure that the district is in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. That's an important part of what we do. It's an important source of funding. It's also morally correct to follow the laws. We might work to change them in a way that we want. That's for the community to decide. It's our role to listen to the community. I think how we create a safe space for students, you know, we're very lucky that we have very great teachers, a very great community, and a small community, a tight-knit community. And I think we should just continue to lean into all of those great positives that the school district has.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to start with you this time, Mr. Flynn. This is related. Do you see yourself being an advocate for public education in the Missouri Legislature in any way?
That's a loaded question. In what capacity?
Well...
In any capacity?
In any capacity. In other words, I believe that the writer of this question believes that public education is under attack in Missouri. Okay? I'm filling that in, but I really do think that, given the whole question. Are you going to play a role to protect it in the legislature?
Well, I will tell you that I'm a product of public education. I lived in six different states growing up. I went to seven different public schools growing up, as well as my father moved in his career. So I'm a huge advocate of public education. I graduated from the University of Missouri in Columbia. So if there's something that the school board is passionate about, that we need to go and lobby and go up to Justice City, then absolutely, I'm 100% for that.
Hey, how about you, Mr. Zach?
More echoing, yeah. I'm also a product of public school education. My wife is full private education, and, you know, that was the conversation that we had when she was coming to Brentwood. It was really important to me, that my daughter go to public school. I think that it's just a very different experience and one that's overall more beneficial. Lobbying the state legislature, you know, I don't know. I think I would support any board member who wanted to do that, but, you know, my view of my role and how I can best help the board is to be an advisor and to bring my experience to bear to help the board overall, me personally being an advocate. You know, I would rather support those who have a clear idea of where they want to go.
Okay, finally you, Ms. Clark.
Well, I will advocate for public education to anyone that will listen, including the legislature. I would say Brentwood is in a great position where a lot of our revenue comes from local sources. So from that standpoint, there's a lot of control that we have still here. But as far as policies and issues that the state would have a role in, yes, I would definitely be interested in advocating for Brentwood specifically, but public education in the state of Missouri, specific, or in general as well. I too went to all public education as well, so I, we really are echoing a lot.
I think your first this time, Mr. Zach. A number of you have mentioned that you appreciate the quality of your educators here. How are you going to keep them?
That's a great question. I mean, I think that at the end of the day, it's, do you feel fulfilled in your job and are you appropriately compensated? And I think that, you know, that's a review, that is a ongoing conversation that needs to be had yearly or, you know, more frequently. And again, we as the board, I think, would lean a lot on the superintendent to let us know what the teachers are feeling, how they're behaving, what do they want, what do they need, and how can we help her facilitate retention of those teachers.
Okay. You, Ms. Clark.
So, yeah, I think you definitely have to look at compensation, and like I said, we're one of the best districts in St. Louis County, so you definitely want to look at the other top districts and make sure that we're somewhere in the same range. But that being said, we definitely have a duty to taxpayers that we have to watch what we're asking them. But I also think just as important is a culture, because you can make a lot of money, and if you don't like where you work, I think it can kind of suck away at your soul. And from what I've seen so far, the culture here is great. The teachers are so passionate about what they're doing, and they're listened to, and they have a lot of autonomy, and I think that counts for a lot, too.
Okay. Finally you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I think it really boils down to culture, and of course, you know, compensation does play a part in that, but people are going to be, to retain anybody, they need to feel that they're engaged, they need to feel that they're in a safe environment, they need to feel challenged, they need to feel that somebody is out there mentoring them, looking out for them, looking out for their best interests, helping them overcome roadblocks that are along the way. So ways that we can continue to foster a very supportive school culture where everyone feels truly valued. It doesn't matter if you're a doctor or if you're just a recent college graduate with a teaching certificate. Everyone should be treated with the same level of respect in a safe work environment.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to start with you this time, Ms. Clark. We're going to go back to some specific questions. So you're going to get a couple of very specific questions here. The first one deals with class size. And this is what the question says. I'm not quite sure I understand it entirely. The high school classes range from 32 to 55. Who wrote this question? Okay. Can you tell me what you mean by it?
So my question was, and I apologize if we're not making it more clear...
That's okay.
Just as an awareness, are you aware that the high school class sizes are 32 to 55 in size?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So, are you?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, you know, my husband and I were married a long time before we decided to have kids, and then we were like, we have got to figure out this whole district thing. So the size of all of Brentwood High School is less than my graduating class in high school. And so I was, like I said, I had some thoughts about that. Is it the same as going to a big district? Will there be the same opportunities? So yes, I'm definitely well-aware of the size of each class, and that presents opportunities, but I also know it presents challenges as well.
So what we're talking about is senior, junior, sophomore. So what we're talking about is senior, junior, sophomore, freshman. Yeah. Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, so I'm acutely aware of this. My son, when he was in eighth grade, the class size was, I want to say it was 55. And then going into his freshman year in high school, it dipped down to, I think, 44. So there was a huge drop there. And that's why I brought up earlier the retention. We can go out and try to open enrollment and bring tuition, but that's a Band-Aid. What we need to really fix and focus on is the retention. Why are these students leaving? If we can keep the same class size, 55, and maybe even grow it to 56, 57 in one for one class, that is a huge, that's an astronomical improvement from where we are today. So I really want us to continue to focus on that. We have fantastic academics. Our athletic program, we reach out and partner with other school districts to provide that for our students. There's not one sport that I don't think any student wants to play that we don't find a way to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Finally you, Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I mean, the small class sizes are part of the thing that, one of the reasons that drove me and my wife to come to Brentwood. I think that this is an area where we can, you know, lean on what private schools do well to help our small class sizes have a good high school experience. And that is continue to work with other schools. You know, if there's an all-girls school, they link up with all-boys school. They have events together. There's no reason why we can't adopt that model to improve the students' lives in the high school if they're feeling any kind of drawback from having that small class size.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with you this time, Mr. Flynn. And this is a question about growth. So this question is, if McGrath continues to grow at its current pace, how would you ensure quality education with the available resources?
Well, if we continue to grow at this pace, we may have to look at some of our spaces. We don't, we want to continue to retain and remain our student-to-teacher ratio that we have currently today. And we do have flexibility at McGrath to continue to expand if need be. But if we expand outside of our boundaries, we may have to look at maybe resizing where our elementary and kindergarten and first-grade classes are in second and then third, fourth, and fifth. That just might, that might, that's the opportunity. That's a, I guess it's a, that is a good problem to have, unfortunately, is growth.
Okay, Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the focus on growth is growing the overall population of Brentwood. And I think that's a job for the city. How can we, as the board, help and address those challenges? You know, I think there's a lot of opportunity for creativity. I don't think we're hurting for space overall. You know, we do have the high school here where we have very small class sizes. Right next door is McGrath. Maybe we switch things around. Maybe you make, you make the middle school age ranges different. Maybe you, you know, when I went through, it was K through 6 was an elementary school. Maybe you address that. Maybe you move some classes around. You know, I think that, like Ryan said, it's a good problem to have. And we don't, I don't think we're constrained by space. I think we have an opportunity.
Okay, finally you, Ms. Clark.
Well, as a future McGrath mom, I'm excited that we may have that problem. Of all the problems to face a school district, I hope that that, that sounds like a really good one to have. And from what I've heard so far, I know there were a ton of kindergartners entering McGrath last year, and the problem was dealt with, the problem was dealt with really well. And I have total faith in the administration and the staff that they will find ways, and if need be, creative ways, to make it work and still keep that core Brentwood value of small class sizes.
Okay, we're going to start with you this time, Mr. Zach. This is a follow-up to talking about the anxious generation. And it says that that book offers a, you know, let-growth program for free to districts to include real school play engagement and resources. Would you support pursuing this district? Use some of those resources?
I would want to have a thorough investigation with, of those resources. I think it's always a great idea to explore resources that are available. Is it in a general matter? Yeah, I think that it would be a good idea to give kids time away from screens and to have time in pro-social environments amongst their peers. Whether that's more instructional play, more after-school activities, anything like that that gets them engaged with each other and how to function in a society and not be anxious and to make faux pas and to say, I'm sorry. To grow is a great opportunity. So yeah, I would definitely explore those resources.
Ms. Clark.
So I've been impressed so far at things like the curriculum review and the programs and ideas that teachers come up with. So I think this is an issue where I would want to hear from the experts, that being those people that actually have to teach high school and middle school students and even younger, and see what resources they have heard about from other educators and what resources they would like to use in order to meet the aims of trying to reduce the anxiety of the anxious generation.
Okay, finally you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, so I'm not familiar with that resource, but I would kind of echo what everyone else has said. You know, any, any resource that's going to help our students succeed should be investigated and should be looked at. And we should follow our processes and procedures. Take that through the curriculum committee. Have that, have those discussions on what the right tool is. Maybe that is a great tool, but maybe there's even a better tool out there that we don't know about yet. But it's taking that feedback and putting it through our process. And maybe that's the part we can't, we need to speed up some of that process. But we need to make sure we bring in the right tools at the right time.
Okay. I was going to say, this is the last question, but it looks like we're getting one here. But I, here's a question. What do you think at this moment in the Brentwood School District Board, what is one characteristic you think would move it forward? And we're going to start with you, Ms. Clark.
So I think the board is in a really good place. We have a great superintendent. We have a strategic plan. The buildings are done, are almost, the projects are almost complete. So I think a great board member at this time would be someone who is willing to listen and receive feedback and information from a variety of sources, but specifically from the superintendent and from the community as well. But I think we're in a great spot.
Okay, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I think anybody that is passionate about Brentwood and passionate about public schools, has their kids going to public schools and plans for them to graduate from a public school. I think that would make a fantastic work member. Somebody that's open to maybe changing some of their thoughts. And that's been my most eye-opening experience. I may have come in with an idea, but through the discussion, you go with a different idea that's even better. And so being adaptable and flexible, somebody that has those characteristics, I think is incredibly important. And somebody that's entrepreneurial, too. We are a very small school district. And so we have the ability to pivot very quickly when need be. And so we need to be open to those new ideas and a different way of doing things at times.
Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I think that that's the right characterization of the board. I think we're in a good place. I view my day job and the skills I have there as being beneficial to the board. It's, yes, bring forth ideas, but more, let's advise. And where we're going too fast, if we need to slow down, or where we're not going fast enough and we need to pay more attention to something in particular. You know, working in a corporate environment as an advisor, everyone's always looking to move very quickly. And sometimes they're not all moving together. Sometimes they're moving in different directions. Sometimes they're all moving in the wrong direction, like violating the law, for example. You never want to do that. So, you know, I view my role as being that kind of, not outside looking in, but it's being an advisor and helping everybody to focus on what can make the biggest difference and how do we all get there together.
Okay, I'm going to go three minutes over. Is that okay? Because I want to get this last question in. But before I ask the last question, there are a number of questions that I think belong, being answered in your, in your final statement. So let me just bring them up. How can somebody contact you? What inspired you to run for a school board? And what specifically would you offer this team, your strengths? So think about that. But here's the last question. And we're going to start with you, Mr. Flynn. Whose voice can we learn the most from? And I think what this person is really getting at is what did they, what they wrote at the bottom, which is, do you think kids' voices are important, too? And how do you get to listen to them?
Yeah, I think students' voices are incredibly important. I mean, they are going to speak the truth. They come unfiltered. Whereas adults, they have, give a way to filter some of that information out. And we are biased towards that. So I think student, listening to students' voices, finding ways to connect with them, whether that's through a counselor if they feel comfortable, whether that's through, you know, a teacher that they really enjoy working with, or, I mean, it could be a survey. There's a number of different ways that I think we can reach out and connect better with our students and get feedback that will help our district continue to grow.
Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the primary voice that we would need to listen to as a member of the board, as a superintendent, I think that, you know, it's our role to manage and to help the superintendent run the district. I think that kids' voices are important, but we need to get that through the filter of the teachers and the superintendent. If I listened to my child's voice all the time, we'd be having candy for dinner every single day. So there needs to be a balance there. You know, I'm not diminishing what kids have to say. I think it's important, but we need to listen to all voices and especially the voices who are running the school district on a day-to-day and have that overview and that perspective.
Okay, finally, Ms. Clark.
Well, I think that that is a hard question because I think there's so many stakeholders in the school district that you can't single out one as being the most important. I think about, my dad graduated from Brentwood High School in 1967, and he lives in Brentwood now. He's retired. He's a taxpayer, so he's supporting the school district, right? I still think his voice is important. My son, he's five years old. My daughter's four years old. I think their voices are important, too. But I also think the teachers' voices are important and the staff and the administrators. So I feel like it's a question that cannot be answered because every voice is important.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to do the final statements, and you're going to go first, Mr. Zach.
Okay. I hope I've made myself pretty clear throughout the night that my skills that I bring to bear are driven in part by my experience in the professional world as an advisor. Two, you know, a large corporation, a school district, has very different goals, very different aims, very different ways to get where they want to go. But in the end, it's the board's job to take the 50,000-foot view and to assist everyone else, to advise, to set policies, and to work towards accomplishing those goals. I think that my skills from advising board members, advising the CEO, working on contracts, ensuring compliance with law are all things that a board has to do as part of its core base mission. And I can bring those experiences, those learnings, to bear in order to help the community. And that's what I'm here to do.
Ms. Clark.
So as a stay-at-home mom, I, and a public education student at one point, I just kind of, boards kind of operated in the ether. And I never met the superintendent of our school district because they were so big. And then I heard a story on This American Life about a district in New Hampshire. When some people didn't show up for a meeting, their budget got cut in half. And I thought, oh, I don't want to be one of those people. I need to be more involved. And so that's why I'm here. I, my kids are going to be going to Brentwood from kindergarten through high school, and I want to be a part of the district. And I'm ready to learn. I'm ready to listen. And I have a lot of flexibility in order to take in all the information as far as time goes. And that's why I want to be here. That's why I want to be elected.
Okay, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, so serving on the Board of Education has been an absolute honor for the past three years. The progress that we've made, the strengthening of our schools, supporting all of our students and achieving some academic success, both in and outside of the classroom, has just been a fantastic journey. Brentwood schools value excellence in our schools and for our students as well. So I am, I'm just really excited about the future. We've got a great strategic plan. We have phenomenal superintendent and teachers on board as well. And so I'm really looking forward to the, to the next five years and seeing our strategic plan truly come to life and fulfill some of our goals. So I also just want to thank everybody here as well to take time on your day to come and ask us and grill us with some interesting questions.
I just, I just saw one more question, and it seems to be important. So I would ask for a suspension of our usual rules and just to get an answer to this question. Is that all right with everybody? Because that's my fault, and I want to fix it.
One minute.
One minute. So we're going to start with you this time, Mr. Flynn. And that is, I submitted this question online, and I didn't see it at all this afternoon, but haven't heard it asked. Do you think the district's current AMI policy is working for students?
So I think the AMI policy is working with, for students to a certain degree. I think the AMI days of when students aren't in class, they don't provide a tremendous amount of value. I think we saw some of that during COVID and how we've kind of come back to that to a certain degree. So I would prefer, honestly, to have actual snow days and to extend the school year. I know that's not necessarily the popular vote or decision probably from some parents and teachers. But from an educational aspect, students in the classroom, they learn more. And we talked a lot about technology and the limits there. I think we'll continue to see that with more and more AMI days. This has been an unseasonably cold winter. And I hope we don't have that again. But never know.
Mr. Zach.
Yeah, I mean, I can only speak from generalities in my experience having a kindergartner, and the AMI day is a 10-minute meeting on the iPad. And then here's some packets. It's a challenge for working parents, especially if there's two working parents. I think that we have an opportunity to get more creative in how to avoid AMI days, you know, going into work and saying, oh, yeah, my kid's back home from school today. A lot of coworkers say, well, my kid's doing a late start or early release. And I think that we have the opportunity to explore things like that, to reduce AMI days.
Okay, finally you, Ms. Clark.
Well, I think this would be an area for parent input, kind of like we did the survey, I think, a year or two ago about what kind of early release days do you like? I know as, as a mom of preschoolers, I feel like AMI days, they are, can be challenging for my preschoolers. My, my son says that the meetings freak him out. So if you couldn't tell, I have reservations about technology, especially with, with younger kids. So I feel like it's something where maybe middle and high schoolers might be more successful at AMI days rather than maybe fifth grade and below. But I'm not an expert, and I'm certainly willing to listen. I know my preference this year, I would have rather just not had AMI days personally and added on to the end of the school year, at least at the preschool. Because it's just, yeah, they don't really have that long of a tension span in a Zoom meeting. So I think it's something I need to learn more about. All I can speak as, as a mom.
Okay, thank you. You see, this made me embarrassed because I missed that question. But when I looked at it, I thought, this is a really important question. So thank you for your gracious acceptance of my mistake. We actually got through. We actually got through 18 questions, specific things, in an hour. And I hope that this was helpful to you. If it was, think about, the league is doing almost 20 of these this month at various kinds of school boards and also city halls, et cetera, et cetera. And if this appeals to you, if you think that this kind of civil conversation is helpful to us as voters, then think about joining us in the League of Women Voters and helping with this kind of work or making a modest contribution to us. We do everything we do with all volunteers. And you can learn about the candidates across the board, not just the school board, and also ballot issues. And you all in Brentwood are going to have one Woffen County ballot issue. It's called Proposition B that you're going to have to decide on. You can go to the Voters Guide, which will be open on the 17th of March online at vote411.org. You put your address in, it pops up just your ballot. I don't know if you've looked at the Voters Guide before. It also comes out in the print copy. It is going to be published in the Post-Dispatch this time on the 20th of March. Plus, our volunteers carry 15,000 of these to various places across six counties, Franklin County, Jefferson County, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a very good place for you to go and to get that kind of information. You know now that you can vote now. And what you could do is you could go to, or actually, no, you can't vote now, but you could still register for the election, is what I wanted to say, until the 12th of March. So if you know a young person or somebody who needs to change their address or to register to vote, go to the Secretary of State's website and they could do that there. I think that's important because we have a very mobile society. The other thing is that you could start early, no-excuse absentee voting, starting on the 25th, which is a Tuesday. And here's where you can vote. You can vote at Daniel Boone, Grand Glaze, Mid-County Library Branches. You can go to the Board of Elections. You can go to the North County Rec Complex. And there's also a polling place at Umsul. Those are the places that you can go to early vote. Now, you need to look at websites for those places. And you can also go to the county website or you can call the League of Women Voters because some of them have different times, you know, because of their opening and closing times. So you can see what times you could vote. The polls, of course, are going to be open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Remember that you need this time around a government-issued state photo voter ID or passport or a military federal photo ID. If you need additional information, call the Board of Elections or call us. The Board of Elections is going to tell you to call us, which is what they do. We're thinking about charging them. But do that and we can answer your questions. You'll see the pros and cons in the Voters Guide on Proposition B, which I think is going to be very interesting, whether or not the city council or the county council can fire department heads and the county counselor without the approval of the county executive. So that has pros and cons that you'll probably want to look into. So thank you very much. You made this work and I hope it was helpful to you. Thank our candidates. Anybody?
Thank you for monitoring.
Sure. I'm sorry that I, I did, I had that question turned over and I didn't see it. But then I thought, I may go full on myself or not. Yes, I need to.
It's a good one that I could work grassing every day.